We're in the circle. I showed up where people were arguing. We're not going to tolerate any type of intimidation or threats. You're allowed to speak your mind because you have freedom of speech. But if it becomes threatening or intimidating, that's different. We are not here to interfere. I'm not here to interfere with this meeting whatsoever. I don't want to be part of it. So please be respectful because I don't want to have to stop somebody or somebody yelling at somebody while trying to avoid them. Please be respectful. Nobody is going to 100% agree with the other person. Understand that. If there's enough, if there's enough in other places here, we all understand that. It doesn't seem to be, alright? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would like to call this meeting to order. Are you ready, Mr. Adams? Okay. Let's start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, I would like a motion to approve the agenda for October 21st, 2021 as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board, I would like a motion to approve the September 16th, 2021 and October 13th, 2021 minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to our special recognitions with Ms. Jen Jules.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. First up tonight, we'll be recognizing Francis Howe Middle School, recently named a National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. Francis Howe Middle is the district's fifth school to earn this prestigious honor in the past three years. The National Blue Ribbon Schools program recognizes individual schools for outstanding academic achievement. To be eligible for the honor, a school must perform in the top 15% in the state based on English and mathematics assessment scores and graduation rates. Only 325 schools in the United States were recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School this year. To put that into perspective, there are more than 130,000 schools in the United States, and Francis Howe Middle is one of only eight schools in the state of Missouri to receive this national honor. Howe Middle will be officially recognized next month at the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award Ceremony in Maryland, but school leaders wanted students to share in the celebration. They arranged a school-wide blue-out this week where students enjoyed cupcakes, games, and inflatables outside with perfect weather, and I have it on good authority that Mr. Johnson whooped Dr. James at least two times on the inflatable obstacle course. And with that, I'd like to invite Dr. James to the podium.
Thank you. We are truly honored to be here this evening. Joining me tonight are our Assistant Principals Ryan Johnson and Kelly Longo, Cheryl Sellers, Special Education Teacher, Tami Kovny, Reading Intervention Teacher, Angie Canul, National Board Certified U.S. History Teacher, and Casey Wambacher, E.L.A. Teacher. Entering our 29th year of serving students and families, Francis Howe Middle School has a longstanding tradition of excellence in academic achievement, character education, and family and community engagement. As a newly recognized National Blue Ribbon School and Missouri Gold Star School, we attribute our excellence in academic achievement to our focus on relationships and maintaining a collective belief in the ability to positively affect students. Francis Howe Middle School continues to build on our positive climate and increase student and staff sense of belonging. Unique to Francis Howe Middle School, through the Character Education Initiative, every day begins in Character Connection class, which is a multi-grade level class dedicated to Francis Howe Middle School's core ethical values, character development, fostering and strengthening relationships, and building academic efficacy. While there's no mistaking that Francis Howe Middle School is academically driven, we recognize that relationships and belonging are necessary for our students to reach their full, unique potential. The National Blue Ribbon Award is a reflection of the power of community and the impact it can have on all children. It is an honor to serve the Francis Howe Middle School community, and I am so proud of our students, our staff, and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Next, we will recognize our 2021 Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award winners. The Emerson Excellence in Teaching Awards, now in its 32nd year, is one of the St. Louis region's most recognized teacher recognition programs. Winners will receive an engraved crystal apple from Tiffany &amp; Company and will be recognized in the Sunday edition of the St. Louis Post-Dispatch on November 21st. Here with us tonight to introduce our first award winner is Dr. Erin Thurston, Assistant Principal at Barnwell Middle School.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here to honor Brittany. Brittany Reese started at Barnwell in 2015 as a math interventionist and was rehired as an eighth-grade math teacher. During this time, her passion and dedication towards students, teaching, and math has been contagious. Specifically, her pursuit has always been to build a classroom community that allows for math to feel approachable and attainable for all students and create a classroom which welcomes risk-taking, teamwork, and inclusivity. Every opportunity she's had to take on a role that would impact how math could be more meaningful to students, she joined without hesitation. Brittany has served on the FHSD Math Leadership Team, CPM Math Superhero Standard Selection Team, Math 8 and Math 180 Training Leader, Curriculum Writing Team, Algebra Resource Adoption Team, and Algebra CPM Pilot Team, and is a PD Strand Facilitator. The challenge to support all math students only increased when she ventured into virtual teaching in 2021. Brittany worked tirelessly to put her expertise from her Master's in Educational Technology to make virtual learning interactive and accessible for all students. She took on this challenge for all virtual teachers by providing strategies and tools. She is a member of the FHSD Canvas Advisory Committee and Barnwell's Canvas Ambassadors, where she went above and beyond having office hours and creating quick how-to videos for staff. Beyond her classroom walls, Brittany is a large part of the Barnwell community serving as our web sponsor and co-sponsor of Barnwell Climate Committee. Most notably, her work as web sponsor held various virtual after-hour activities to ensure our virtual learners felt connected to our school throughout the last school year. Under her leadership, they held outdoor events, virtual mystery nights, and organized transition activities for both in-person and virtual students. More important than anything, she does everything with a smile. Please join me in congratulating Emerson Award winner Brittany Reese.
Next, I'd like to invite Dr. Chris Birch, Assistant Principal at Francis Howe North, to the podium to introduce our second Emerson Award winner.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Marissa Hire, one of our district's Emerson Award recipients. Mrs. Hire embodies excellence in so many ways. In her family and consumer science classroom, she's always positive, genuine, and real with our students. Her learning environment is safe, warm, and inspiring. Since joining the FHN family 10 years ago, she has served as a Classroom Instruction That Works facilitator, cheer coach, and junior class sponsor, which means she coordinates prom every year, no doubt a lofty challenge. But it is her intentional and consistent dedication to our students that makes her stand out. We know our students are struggling now, more than ever, with anxiety, pressure, and a sense of helplessness, and many of them turn to Ms. Hire for support. She is the safe and trusted adult for many of our kids and has been for a long time. Our kids know her compassion, understand her sincerity, and seek her guidance. She is a consummate professional and a wonderful human being. We are so lucky at FHN to have Marissa Hire. Congratulations on winning this well-deserved award.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Birch. For our final recognition of the evening, we'd like to celebrate Independence Elementary School for two recent honors. The first has to do with student learning growth and the second with character. Earlier this month, Independence was named a St. Louis University's Student Growth Top 20 list, coming in at number eight in the state for student learning growth and English Language Arts. The list highlights elementary and middle schools that have been successful in demonstrating outrageously high growth in student learning as opposed to other rankings which tend to focus solely on proficiency. This is quite the testament to Ms. Pavia and her team at Independence. Let's give them a round of applause. We'd also like to recognize Independence for their character education programming, which earned a National Promising Practice Award from Character.org, a Washington, D.C.-based nonprofit organization that provides resources for educators to build nurturing and supportive school cultures. Promising practices are unique, effective, and replicable initiatives that inspire goodness in action and contribute to the field of character development. Now, moving into our best practice portion of the agenda, I'd like to invite Ms. Pavia to the podium to share some information about the award-winning Parents Lead Character Dares program at Independence. Ms. Pavia.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, members of the board, Chief Academic Officers Dr. Hoven and Dr. Rumpus, as well as our patrons and students who are able to join us this evening. We're truly honored to be here and simply represent the work that's done at Independence. This evening, we would like to talk a little bit about the initiative that brought us the Promising Practice. And so, Independence, for several years, has really believed in developing and working with the whole child. Recognizing that the needs of our students evolved five to six years ago and the need for the social emotional supports and strategies was evident. And thankfully, being in a national school of character, we were able to help support those and go even deeper. And in 2018, while in Washington, D.C., receiving our second National School of Character Award, we were introduced to a resource developed by an organization called Character Strong, and the resource is called Purposeful People. And it is a resource that provides a lot of different activities and information and supports for schools that are wanting to develop character within their students. And so, being introduced to that resource was pivotal for us at Independence. We came back from Washington and began implementing these resources with our students and staff through activities, through dares, character dares, and challenging humans, both big and small, to grow their character because we're always, as humans, growing our character. And so, we began to see a lot of positive momentum from these conversations, from engaging our staff and students, utilizing the Purposeful People resource. And we began to think, we need to move this into the home. We need to somehow connect this with our families. And so, these conversations that we're having at school revolving around things like empathy, gratitude, honesty, responsibility, just to name a few of those focus areas with character. It's so important to bring those into the home so the kids are hearing the consistent language from moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, whomever the guardians are, that they're hearing at school. It only deepens their understanding. And so, that was our next step to recruit some of our parents, who I'm going to introduce in just a minute, to help lead this effort with us, as well as staff. And so, it was pivotal that the initiative actually started and really went into motion last year, a year when we were all really, really challenged with being able to connect with each other, with our families specifically when we're talking about the life at school. Character Education has 11 principles that we live by and we kind of help drive and focus the character work that we do. And there's always been a home-side kind of connection, a piece that you can take home and connect at home. We found those to be somewhat effective, but not always. While Principles 3 and 10 really focus on those community pieces, Principle 3 really focuses on that comprehensive and intentional approach. And if you're being comprehensive, you need to involve everyone, right? Not just your students and your staff, but also the families. And then, Principle 10 really relates to that going into the families, into the home, and that community. And so, those pieces helped continue to drive our focus and our desire to get into the home. And having parents lead this effort became even more powerful because parents listening to other parents means a lot and really can help an initiative like this become even more powerful and make it even really come alive. And so, utilizing the Purposeful People resource, as well as our amazing parents to help lead and really cheerlead and champion this work, allowed us to take these next steps and get into the homes. Our parents are also members of one of our leadership teams, our Culture Club, and we talk about all things revolving around culture and climate and how we can take care of all humans, big and small. They attend our meetings and have conversations. They provide input, ideas, strategies, and help us to plan our next steps as far as what we need to do to continue to grow character in our school. And so, I would like to also introduce with me tonight, Mrs. Jana Schultz, one of our Assistant Principals, Mr. Ryan Fall, one of our fifth-grade teachers. He taught fourth grade for years and his second year in fifth grade. He is also helping to champion this work. And then, we have with us this evening, Mrs. Amanda Lubenhausen, Mrs. Heather Brewer, and Mrs. Julie Feedler, and they have been able to join us, and they have been extremely powerful in leading this effort. And so, I would definitely like to thank them and recognize them in their effort with us.
So I'm going to tell you briefly what our plan was and what we took on. So we looked at collaborating with the staff in the Culture Club to create a cohesive plan so that we could roll out to the families what the students were also doing in the classrooms. So each month, beginning of the month, we post what the word of the character word of the month is, as well as the definition that they're using at school. And let's be honest, all of our families can really benefit from having those character words kind of reminded to us because we all need to work on our character development. So then, twice a month, we're also putting out family dares, whether it's something they can discuss at the table or an activity that they can do as a family just to reiterate what that character word is. We also did some readings where the teachers would read to the students online, and the students really loved that because there was a little bit of connection of seeing a book that ties in with the character word as well. And of course, participation is voluntary, but families are really getting involved, so.
I'll pass it on to Heather. Alright, sweet. So, we could talk for a really long time about what makes this program great, but we'll talk just a couple of those things. So consistency, having the students learn about these positive character traits at school, but then coming home and hearing about them and talking about them with their family really lays this great base foundation to recognize these, not only in themselves, but in their friends and in their teachers and people they're around, and see these and know these better. Families, we get these dares twice a month, and while those are often fun or silly and sometimes thoughtful, really what we want is to open the door for communication. We want families talking about it more and it being a part of their regular vernacular. And it helps us as families feel really connected to the school, to what at our school is one of the main heartbeats of the school character, and it makes us feel connected to that and helps us lay this foundational principle. We also utilize student leadership, which is awesome. For these students to see these student leaders with these traits, and it really helps encourage these other students to participate and to emulate those things. And really, it helps our kids not only be better students of character now at elementary school, but we're hoping for middle school and high school. And as adults, we want them to be adults of character and employees of character and citizens of character.
In addition to all that, you have to remember that these are moms, you know, within our school who have lives outside. And they've taken this upon themselves because it's something that they're passionate about. It's something that they believe that other families, you know, would want to be involved in. And they've taken their time to, taken a lot of time, to meet with us many, many times, meet on their own, and create this awesome plan that not only is for this year, but actually we have a plan in place for the coming years when their students don't go to our school anymore. So we have something in place that's going to continue over time. So we'd also like to share some highlights and celebrations of the program. We're going to bring some moms up to celebrate.
Okay, so I'm up to do some celebrations. The first thing that jumped out at me when I took this page on was from last year. It was an honesty question, and the dare that was posed was something we did around the family table. It was the question, if you found $1,000 in a parking lot, what would you do? So at that time, I had a first grader and a fifth grader, and it opened up a really amazing dinner conversation about honesty, about what that looks like in an easy setting. I didn't feel like I was lecturing them. They didn't feel like they were being taught a lesson by their mom. It was very give and take on what that looks like. Another dare that we actually just did this October month that I actually brought, you probably can't see it, it's beautiful artwork. The dare was an honesty artwork. We left it open-ended so it could do, so families could take it however they wanted. But for us, we wrote the word honesty and then we wrote down what that means, to be honest. Some of the things were honesty is kindness, honesty is friendship. And my son actually said honesty is being true to yourself. So it was a great way to talk, again, with not taking a lot of time. It took five or 10 minutes, but we were able to take that word from elementary school that we use in our life, that we want our kids to be, and really apply it and what that means to them. So those were just a couple highlights in my house that we did. As far as highlighting the students or the students highlighting their dares, they have town halls at the grade level, and we're starting to encourage the students to talk at their town halls and let their fellow classmates know what dares their family did and what that looked like and what it meant for them, which then encourages the students that have not done the dares to go home and talk to their mom and say, hey, or dad, or grandparents, or whoever their caregiver is, and participate in some of those. So we're just really hoping to get that kind of moving. The other thing, we have a video on here that I don't know if Heather wants to speak on. It's her son, one of the highlights of the program.
This is just my son Beckett, sweet guy, he's nervous. But last year, we did an emotion charade where each family member wrote down emotions, and then we were able to act it out and guess what they were. So this is him talking about the emotion charades.
Hi, my name is Beckett, and it was just so much fun playing charades with my family. And the cool part is just how other people express the world with their feelings.
So obviously, we have some really great conversations. As a fifth-grade teacher, I lead out these town hall meetings on a weekly basis, and it is awesome to see these kids talking about these real-world foundational principles that, you know, we should all have in our lives. And the chatter amongst them and what they're doing at home has just been awesome. So that kind of brings us to our next steps, like what are we going to do this year and beyond? So one of the big things is that we really want to expand our participation. We've had great participation so far, but we just want it to grow exponentially, even outside of Independence Walls. We get to have a full year of our character words this year. Just because of the pandemic and things, last year it didn't always go as smooth as possible, so we don't have as much of that to deal with this year. We have a plan for staff to help, different staff, to help introduce these dares on a monthly basis, just to get more buy-in from our staff. And then, one of the biggest things is we want to try and start finding a way to document participation in families because we know that if families see other families participating in this, it will encourage them to do the work as well. And so, through that, we have ENN, which stands for Eagle News Network at our school. It's a student leadership team that runs a weekly news segment for about anywhere between 10 and 20 minutes long every week. It's awesome, but we are going to start incorporating these dares and videos of families participating in these dares during ENN. And we are starting a hashtag of #INDFamilyDares, which brings us to our last slide. And we thought it would be very fitting to introduce a community dare tonight. So this actually is called Worth the Fight. This looks exactly like what we would give one of our, at one of our town halls. This is actually a student dare. And so, we invite you to participate. And so, here's how it works. So I want you to think about three disagreements that you've had with people recently, okay? And kind of self-reflect on that. And then, you need to ask yourself three different questions. First question is, what happened because of the argument? What was the effect? What was the outcome of that argument? The second question is, how did you feel afterward? And then, the third one is, what would you do differently? And then, the real challenge here is, one of those people that you had an argument with, go talk to them and make a commitment, express that you want to do something specifically better in that relationship with them, and just let them know that. And we would love for you, thank you. It would be really cool if you kind of videoed yourself, and I know this is really putting yourself out there, pushing you out of your comfort zone a little bit. If you could video yourself and talk about that conversation that you had with that person and how this dare had an effect on you. That's one of the things that we're going to continue to encourage to our families. That's one of the things that we're going to continue to encourage to our families. So we think it'd be really cool if we had a bunch of community participation and talking about how this dare made an impact on them. And you can use the hashtag I N D Family Dares. Thank you, guys.
Like to thank the board again and everyone tonight for both recognitions. And thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak tonight. And again, feel blessed just to represent the Independence community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have patron comments. During patron comments, patrons and staff are invited to address the Board of Education. When I call your name, please come to the podium so everyone can hear. The board is interested in hearing the public's concerns and opinions. We do not respond to comments or questions during the meeting. Questions and concerns will be addressed by Dr. Hovin and other appropriate staff members at a later date. Please remember that comments will be limited to three minutes each. Due to confidentiality, comments about personnel matters are not allowed. Also, just a friendly reminder that we would like to ask all speakers and audience members to model civility and respect during board meetings. May we all listen to the viewpoints of others, even if we don't agree, and model the behavior we expect of our children. First up, we have Bill McGee.
Okay, first off, I want to thank my wife for running my three kids around to their sports with without me tonight, so I could be, I couldn't be out here without her support. How did we get here? How did Francis Howell get to this point? A district where parents refuse to let leftist ideology permeate versus an unrelenting, unflinching school system. I have the answer. Hear me out. Our voting rubric in St. Charles County consists of two elements, the very familiar Election Day election in November and the very little known special election for the school board in April. Keep these two elections separate in your mind. Francis Howell School District is made up of about 120,000 voters in 49 different geographical precincts from Augusta to Cottleville. In the November 2020 election, roughly 94,000 of these 120,000 people showed up to the polls to vote. Six months later, during the special April school board election, guess how many voters showed up? Hint, it's way lower than you think. The total is less than 5,000 voters showed up, or 19 times less than what showed up in November. The two school board members who were voted onto the board in April got voted on the board with less than 3% of total voters, meaning less than 3 in 100 people in our area voted for these two people. If you are following along, you can start to understand what is going on. When you take the community as a whole, or let's say 94,000 of us, the November turnout, the leftist agenda of the educational system is just noise. The proof is in the votes. Trump won Francis Howell School District by over 16 points and 14,800 votes. Same thought exercise here for April now, with only 5,000 total votes. Now the educational system holds considerable advantage. They are 5% of the November voters and 75% of the April voters. This is how you get seven leftist board members to hire a far-left superintendent who appoints far-left committee chairs who hires far-left principals. This is why we're in the middle of conservative stronghold of St. Charles. You have a school system closer to downtown San Francisco. It doesn't stop here. Francis Howell School District rolled out a new thought exchange platform. The same people control this vote too, as evident by the highest rated comments are on teacher raises and requiring masks and shots. Does anyone think that Dr. Hovin is going to use that ethically? Absolutely not. He's going to say emphatically that Francis Howell School District residents want gender identity bathrooms and use the poll results to club us over the head with. Be very, very wary of this new platform. Lastly, I want to thank the Wentzville School Board, specifically Jason Goodson, Shannon Stoli, Sandy Garber, Dale Shepper, Daniel Bryce. These are the true modern day heroes. For the first time in 19 months, a vote was held with kids first, not fear first. Sincerely, thank you Wentzville heroes. Wentzville currently has no masks and no quarantines and is currently better than Francis Howell in nearly every metric on COVID. This is a mic drop moment. And in the face of this, you all will vote later on more masks and more quarantines for our kids. We as citizens need to fix this. 20,000 votes and two strong conservatives will fix this problem.
Next up, we have Randy Cook.
The Black History and Black Literature courses are electives. They're not mandatory. How many times have we heard this statement over the past six months? I'm going to quote something here. Quote, "Over the next five years, we want to overhaul the entire history curricula, K through 12, but are prioritizing a high school Black History course to be written this school year." End quote. That was sent last July by a Francis Howell staff member to Dr. LaGarret King, who everyone in this room I think knows. The district then hired Dr. King to train curriculum writers of Francis Howell. Of all the people who can provide professional development training, Francis Howell chose to pay the Mizzou professor who teaches the course called, and I quote, "Critical Race Theory in Education," end quote, at Mizzou, to train the staff that writes education curriculum at Francis Howell. There were over a half a dozen of these training sessions with Dr. King late last year and earlier this year. As I told the board in my October 7th letter, I cannot draw the parallels between Critical Race Theory and over 125 pages of curriculum documents in a three-minute comment period. I did that in my October 7th letter to the board, which I have not yet received a response to. And for those interested, you can view that letter at francishowellfamilies.org or on their Facebook page. As I showed in that letter, approval of the Black History and Black Literature courses broke the board's own rules for an item in the consent agenda, which is for routine and non-controversial items. Those courses were neither. I recently learned my own son's kindergarten class uses a social studies curriculum that is neither posted on the district's website nor approved by the Board of Education. In this unapproved curriculum, Francis Howell is planning to teach kindergarteners about white and black in the context of race. My son has no idea what white and black mean in that context, none. But the district wants to teach him at the ripe age of six. I was going to close with a literature selection from one of the Black Literature approved books. Given the children here, I'm not going to read it. But I'll tell you, it's from The Vanishing Half, Chapter 5, Page 112 of the hard copy. We'll see if we can get it posted somewhere, maybe on the Francis Howell Family or website for anyone who doesn't want to buy this book. But suffice it to say, it's disgusting. The board approved purchase of 45 copies of this book for the Black Literature course. And two curriculum writers read this book and thought it appropriate for 10th graders. There's some sick people writing curriculum here. And now they've been trained in Critical Race Theory too. So there's some serious changes that need to happen around here and the board should make them. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ken Gontars.
Good evening. In the September 7th radio interview with 97 One's Mark Redden, the superintendent stated, "We will not adopt Critical Race Theory. We will not be teaching Critical Race Theory." And I still stand by that. Several times, the superintendent asked specifically, "What are the concerns of the people? Give specifics, not just blanket statements." He requested people read the curriculum to judge for themselves if Black History and the Black Literature courses teach CRT. At least three times during that interview, the superintendent was asked by Mark Redden, "How can't you see that this is Critical Race Theory?" Two weeks ago, a concerned parent wrote and sent all of you a 17-page dissertation, complete with footnotes, citations, references, YouTube links, sunshine requests, and many, many specifics. The document definitively shows that the courses in question not only teach Critical Race Theory, but they are the epitome of it. The 17-page document can be found on francishowellfamilies.org. Many others in the area have come to the same conclusion. Local radio talk show hosts, Mark Hawks at 97 One Talk Radio, the folks at 93.3, 91.5, 95.9, 1320, 101.9, 94.1, 106.5, all have come to the same conclusion. Every elected representative and senator of St. Charles County, Onder, Igle, Christopher Nelly, Wyman, Schroer, Vasco, Schwandren, Snelling, Hicks, Hill, West, every one of them found out that this is Critical Race Theory. Local college professors that we talked to at Umsul, Wash U, even at the St. Charles Community College who teach and write on Critical Race Theory have acknowledged and celebrated that what is being taught in these two courses is right in line with what they teach. Local churches, including a mega church in the area, affirm that it is Critical Race Theory. Local people of color, when shown this course content, acknowledge it is Critical Race Theory. LaGarret King, the self-proclaimed expert of CRT, who this school board paid $15,000 to develop and implement these courses, endorse and cites the 1619 Project in Article 3 of the Black History Course. And most importantly, the many parents and community members of St. Charles and Francis Howell who have taken the time to read these curriculums are crying out, "This is CRT." Do you realize how unresponsive and tone deaf you look to many in this community? Members of this community are crying out, "Stop teaching this agenda-driven intrudence. You are causing division." We at Francis Howell Families joined with the community and asked, "What is it going to take to get this school board and the superintendent to listen, to respond, to rid this school of this agenda-driven curriculum? It looks like it's going to take an election."
Thank you. Next up, we have Katie Rash.
Hi, today I'd like to share some thoughts about why it is appropriate to be careful with the literature available to our kids in our schools. I will not be reading any sexual quotes. I'll spare you of that, but just some thoughts, okay? Number one, we've heard that we need to look at graphic sexual books in context. If it is an otherwise good book that happens to have one very graphic sex scene, then it might all balance out and be okay. That is, the literary, that is, the literary value and insights provided by the book can justify giving graphic sexual content to minors. But there's another way of looking at it. Imagine for a moment that you're standing in front of the milk display at the grocery store. You've been told that a specific jug contains an ounce of poison. You get to choose to take home one of the many poison-free jugs or the poison jug. What do you pick to bring home to your kid? Okay. They all have nutritional value, don't they? It's similar to our literature selections. There are many books that provide windows into the lives of others that do not contain graphic sexual content. Why are our schools and school libraries giving this graphic sexual content to our kids? And yes, they are. And if you want to see this, look at francishowellfamilies.org for this information. We are continuing to add detail. I am not reading this to you tonight, but it's there and you can find it on our website. Number two, we've heard that we can't have censorship in our school libraries. But let's take a deeper look at that. Can we imagine anything conceivable that would be inappropriate for our minor children? Would it be appropriate, and this is hyperbole, don't get freaked out, would it be appropriate to have a bomb building manual in our middle school libraries? I mean, that's STEM, right? A student could learn something from it. But I guess that many people would say that having bomb building manuals in our middle school libraries would not be a great idea. It would cross a line. There is a line, there is a line. The only question is where we draw that line. Number three, we've heard community members say that their kids can access sexually graphic content on their smartphones or when hanging out with friends. Is that an excuse to give up on protecting our kids? No, it is not. Number four, we've heard that providing sexually graphic options is okay as long as these books are just options and not mandatory. But guess what? If I gave my child, my five-year-old, an option between broccoli and cotton candy for dinner, he would choose cotton candy. Minors are minors.
Thank you, your time is up. Next up, we have Tricia Smith.
I believe Francis Howell School District has failed the families and students on numerous fronts, so much so that my husband and I decided to withdraw our now first grader from your school and opted for homeschool instead. Your abuse of mask requirement made that decision very easy for us. Unfortunately, I have a high schooler that wasn't so open to the idea. So against our better judgment, she is attending Francis Howell North. I'm baffled COVID-19 is still at the forefront of conversations almost two years later. Let us remember this is a virus that has an infection survival rate of 99.9973% or an infection death rate of 0.0027% for the age group of 0 to 19. If 0% is your threshold, I think we have met that very consistently and easily. Here we are yet again, fighting for our children's right for an uninterrupted education without irrational mask and quarantine policies that are not even a law, but a mere recommendation. In fact, County Executive Steve Elman repeatedly reminds us of this. I'm having a really hard time understanding your logic or that lack thereof when it comes to quarantining. As it stands, only a non-vaccinated child is required to quarantine after close contact with a COVID-positive student. Per the CDC's website, it states, "Since vaccines are not 100% effective at preventing infection, some people who are fully vaccinated will still get COVID-19." The director of the CDC, Rochelle Walensky, reported, "Fully vaccinated people who get a COVID-19 breakthrough infection can spread the virus to others even if they are symptomatic or not symptomatic." The director of the CDC has openly admitted that the vaccine doesn't prevent transmission of COVID and those that are vaccinated can still get and spread the virus. Why is an unvaccinated child discriminated against when we know they're not spreading this virus any more than a vaccinated child? Why are these students forced to miss important days of school, sporting, and social activities? Parents, take note. During the 2020, 2021 school year, Francis Howell School District had 4,408 students placed in standard quarantine. Of those students, only 74 or 1.68% later tested positive. Right now, we have only 35 students of 17,500 that have tested positive. That's .002%. As we watch test scores plummet and students' mental health decline, you really need to ask yourself, is your method of masking and quarantining children really effective? You are not required to do this, just ask Gail Griswold in the Camden Towne District. She has said she is more than happy to consult you with how she has successfully run a school district without tyrant rules like masking and quarantining. Your current policy on handling COVID-positive exposure is blatant discrimination and interfering with our children's right to an education and greatly impacting their mental health. Every single one of you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Next up, we're going to need to be respectful, please. Next up, we have Chris Comier.
It's going to be hard to top that, that was pretty good. You guys are failing, all you guys are terrible. Like you have a room divided, we have a country divided. You guys should all literally be ashamed of yourself with this. Turn my mic off. It's on, all right, my phone's ringing. Yeah, you guys should be ashamed of yourself, but whatever, let me go. I am here today to address the board on the removal of the mask mandate. I believe mandates are an abuse of power. Dr. Hovin, when you and the members of the board tell my son that he has to wear a mask, you have crossed a very personal line with me. Freedom of choice means everything to me and it should mean everything to these kids. Mandates, in my opinion, have led to an abuse of power. We, the people, are tired of these mandates. Unfortunately, because of mandates like this, thousands have lost their job and will continue to lose their job, most who have worked hard through the pandemic. Nurses, doctors, cops, firefighters have been reprimanded for exercising their freedom of choice. Two-week mask mandate has turned to two years of tyranny. Wake up, people. Yeah, that's what you are teaching these kids. If you don't wear a mask, you get in trouble. Board members, when you pledge allegiance to that flag, I strongly recommend that you take more pride in it. Freedom of choice is freedom of choice for everyone. It doesn't matter your age, race, sex, or religion. If people want trans bathrooms, let them have trans bathrooms. If women want to say my body, my choice, then it is their body and their choice. And if some... And if someone doesn't want to wear a mask, then mind your own fucking business.
We're going to have to watch our language next time, please, sir. Next up, we have Jamie Martin.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Martin. I have four kids in the district, one in high school, two in middle school, and one incoming. Today, I want to talk about what it means to be a Francis Howell family. When I was 24, my mother committed suicide. When I was 35, I lost a friend who was black. He was shot unarmed by a black police officer in the full light of day in an Austin, Texas neighborhood. He was 17. It was my son's eighth birthday. Both of those experiences changed me because before my mother died, I believed I knew more than I did. I treated her mental illness like an inconvenience in my life. You see, she was sick for a long time. In the worst years of her illness, I graduated high school. I started college and I had my first baby. My siblings and I still needed her. And in the end, her death was a terrible lesson about wasted time, about what is and isn't important conflict and that no one's struggle should be an inconvenience. But before my friend David died, I believed that officers targeted citizens only for their crimes and only used force to defend themselves. When a police officer with a good record and a good heart shot the boy that I loved, that I taught in Sunday School, the boy who played and laughed with my children, and I sat holding his mother, both of us sobbing to remember her sweet child, the world shifted for me. I began to ask questions and to listen. I saw understanding about terrible mistakes, about these terrible mistakes. And now I know that David was shot because in our country, we learn on TV, in schools, in courts, in church and in our neighborhoods that people with darker skin are more dangerous than other people and we train our officers that the struggle of some is a danger to others. I came last month to the school board meeting and I sat over there. I wore a mask. Most of the masked people sat over here. I heard comments about the problem of being woke and watched people in yellow shirts offer their friendship and introduce themselves to unmasked people, but no one without a mask introduced themselves to me. I want to say tonight that my family is a Francis Howell family, that we are for equity, inclusion, and diversity programs, including age-appropriate CRT lessons. My family is a Francis Howell family and we recognize that studies have shown advanced programs before high school only widen the gap for black and brown children. We know the painful history of advanced classes, some of which were created years ago in many districts as a way to avoid forced desegregation. We support classrooms that build academic excellence through collaboration and flexible grouping within the classroom.
Thank you. Your time is up.
We are a Francis Howell family.
Next up, we have Sharon Kumnick.
Thank you. Is this on? Okay. Yes, I have learned some things coming to the meetings and talking to people and I have come to the conclusion that our school board has rubber-stamped a program that they know nothing about, that they took no time to investigate, that they only went by what they were told by their academic board of advisors. And I charge you with having to look at yourself and what you've brought about and ask you to please rescind your approval of these programs and step back and go through them till you get to a point where you really understand what is in this curriculum. You have to admit that you don't know, that if we had started telling you this last year, we would not be here. You would know. But you okayed this program having no information about it and not doing your due diligence and looking at the curriculum. You just rubber-stamped it. I know you like this authority you have, but you have to admit you don't know what's in this curriculum. You have no idea. You need to step back, rescind your approval, and go through it. If you are people of good conscience, you would admit you don't know what's here. You don't know what these classrooms are teaching. So I'm asking you to do the thing that you should do. Step back and go over this curriculum. Do your job because you haven't done it. And we have plenty of information to let us know that you have not done this. So, I mean, and I feel that some of the things I've heard here tonight are just very, very upsetting. I'm really totally disappointed in what your view of the family of students is. I'm sorry.
Next up, we have Grayson Joster? Justice, sorry.
Hello, my name is Grayson Justice. I'm a graduating student of Francis Howell Central, class 2013. Today, I'm here to support the district's decision on masks in schools. I thought this pandemic was over back in June with people taking the COVID vaccine, but then Delta variant and MU began to spread like wildfire in California and Greece that started in north and east of Missouri. And people are not taking the vaccine to the misinformation and conspiracy theories. So, we're back to square one and schools are opening and hospital beds are out of... Teachers want to see their students' smiling faces, but it's better than not in a hospital bed or worse. There is a video on the recount where a side-by-side of Senator Josh Hawley is saying how innocent the parents who are against masks in schools and the other is parents who are threatening, harassing, stalking, and terrorizing teachers and school boards of threats. And "I will come after you and all of you who support this." Guess one who is that? I also support the Black History and Literature classes for high school students to be an option for students, not the parents, on their semester. I also want to have an LGBTQ history on October because this month is LGBTQIA History Month and students need to know how these men and women changed the faces of American history from Marsha P. Johnson to Pete Burge. I support what the district is doing for their students, their staff, and the faculty for keeping them safe and healthy for this school year. And I feel sorry for the parents who disagree on this decision. Thank you. Mask up, vax up.
Next up, we have Julia McDonald.
Tonight, I want to advocate championing mental health during this pandemic. Tonight, I want to make the message clear that Francis Howell staff cannot endure this pace. We are still in a pandemic. We are in crisis. Yet we seem to be pushing full steam ahead, trying to do all the things with not enough staff to accommodate. As a result of pushing full steam ahead, elementary classroom teachers have daily schedules that are so tight it lacks transition times. For example, a writing lesson ends at 10:45 and lunch begins at 10:45. The whole day is scheduled like this. This does not make sense. This frenzied pace is not suitable for the emotional well-being of staff and students. What can we do to put mental health first as we wade the waters of teaching through a pandemic? I am making a call to chief admins and our superintendent to determine what can be immediately taken off our plates to calm the chaos endured each day. I see staff working before and after school to figure out solutions to unsustainable scenarios we encounter in our buildings. We cannot sustain this pace. A school's goal is the education and happiness of students, but it seems we are transitioning into a daily goal of simply surviving each day as we spin our wheels accommodating for substitute no-fills, not enough paraprofessionals to help our special education students, not enough kitchen staff, not enough custodial staff. Please begin using the COVID relief funds our district has received to pay wages worthy of motivating people to join us and stay with us. District money is saved when staff members are pulled from their jobs to be a classroom substitute. This money could be given to the staff that is doing more without compensation or possibly a source of teacher steps or raises. Thank you to chief admins that have stepped up to substitute when there are no subs. Are these days in the classroom changing perspectives of what current realities are for teachers? Francis Howell is full of talented staff, positive things, but I see their bright light steadily dimming when the stress load is too great. I am sharing what I see through my lens and what I hear when I discuss concerns with staff members. It is time to steer the ship in a more reasonable and sensible direction. Recent news reports have shown examples of districts that have heard the concerns of their staff. Rittner Springfield School District superintendents have heard the voice of the teachers and have taken action with a plan to address the mental health of staff. What is the plan in Francis Howell? We deserve a specific feedback and direction in these matters. I repeat this in an empathetic way. We cannot sustain this pace.
Thank you. I believe that is it for public comments this evening. Our time is up. Next up, we have FHEA.
Good evening, board members, cabinet, and patrons. My name's Anita Keener and I am the president of FHEA. We find ourselves in our ninth week of school and your staff and our students are ready for fall break this next week. Your certified staff has gone beyond expectations in these nine weeks. With all the support staff vacancies, staff has had to pick up those duties. And elementary teachers are losing their lunch and their planned time daily. We are not sure how much more staff can put on their plates. The FHEA officers and executive board and building reps are working hard to meet the expectations that the full-time release president used to do. But this has come with a hardship of even more on members' plates. What used to be done by the president of FHEA is being done by building reps and our MNEA staff person. Those concerns and issues that used to be addressed immediately are now being addressed and not being addressed in a timely manner due to the restrictions of daily absences. We are not able to train the building reps as quickly as needed. This has brought even more frustration to our staff. The FHEA president is unable to answer questions or reply to emails, make phone calls, or meet with staff until after 2:00 PM each day. Most issues happened prior to that time. All of these added stressors were not necessary. We are happy to report that FHEA has been asked to participate in most district committees. We thank all of the chiefs for that. Why hasn't administration surveyed staff to see how we are doing? Are you concerned about your staff? We are all struggling. Some districts have surveyed staff and have graciously given them mental health time on PD days. In ending, we hope all staff members have a relaxing, restful fall break with your family and friends. Stay safe and happy Halloween.
Next up, we have Feespot. Nope, okay. Next up, we have our MSBA October Board Report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the mental wellness challenges facing many of our teachers and school district staff. The continuing COVID-19 pandemic has been stressful for everyone, but especially for school personnel. Addressing mental wellness issues among staff has become a major priority for school districts. Rachel Jones is the manager of trauma-informed treatment for the Missouri Department of Mental Health. She was a featured presenter at a recent school safety academy sponsored by MSBA's Center for Education Safety. And she says it's important to create a supportive culture for teachers and school district staff through what she calls "team care."
Team care is about how the whole building is supporting the workforce. How are you tag-teaming? Are you checking in and out with people? Are you buddying up with someone so that you have an outlet that's an adult, who's safe, who's appropriate, that you can vent when you need to, you can ask for help when you need to, you can tag out if you need to? Some school districts are really great about creating that team atmosphere to help people in the moment and to help them prepare for what the day might bring to them and even to decompress or debrief after a particularly stressful day or event.
Jones adds teachers and other school staff also need to take care of themselves as individuals.
Now, teachers individually need to be doing all the same things that we would recommend children do. children do. Get regular sleep, drink plenty of water, eat food that is healthy, engage in activities that you enjoy that have nothing to do with your role as a teacher. Surround yourself with supportive friends and family and neighbors, and that can build up your strength to go into a school every day and handle all of those things that you won't be able to control. If you've got a good baseline and you're feeling healthy and well, you'll be able to manage the stress so much better.
MSBA has joined with other state education groups as part of a mental wellness think tank to develop a plan to provide additional mental wellness assistance to those in catchwell of education throughout Missouri. The General Assembly has changed state law related to school board candidate filing for this year. Filing now begins earlier, ends earlier, and is shorter, now closing between Christmas and New Year's Day. Candidate filing for the April 2022 school board elections will begin on December 7th and end on December 28th. Contact the MSBA Legal Department if you have questions about school board candidate filing this year. Be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly, to be held on Friday, November 5th, in conjunction with the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. The Delegate Assembly will be voting on position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts during the coming year. Every MSBA member school board is entitled to at least one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly. And there's still time to register for the 2021 Annual Conference, held in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. The event is the largest gathering of school leaders in Missouri each year and will be held at a new location in downtown Kansas City from November 5th through 7th. Several specialized pre-conference sessions will be held on November 4th, including workshops for board secretaries, board presidents, board member certification, and an entire series of sessions on school safety during the Safe Schools and Colleges Forum. During the conference itself, November 5th through 7th, there will be four general sessions featuring some outstanding speakers and more than 100 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, ranging from legal and legislative updates to school safety seminars, some sessions designed specifically for rural school districts, and presentations from school districts on innovative local programs. We'll also be conducting regional meetings during the conference, where you'll have the opportunity to meet with your colleagues from your area of the state and discuss issues of common interest. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, next up, we have our Proposition S update with Mr. Jeremy Bettler.
Good evening, board. So just to kind of update you guys a little bit tonight on Prop S projects and then what should be coming over the next couple of months. So first of all, security vestibules. This project is nearing completion. It was a summer project, upgrading security in all of our schools. A list there of all the projects that have actually been completed. Some of those are new from the last time we actually met, so we have done some new ones since the last update we gave the board. There are still some remaining ones to complete. Becky David, Barnwell, Central Elementary, and Francis Howell Middle. Those are scheduled to be done over fall break, so we do anticipate a 100% completion of this project by the end of fall break. So, and again, all this was related to aluminum procurement, so aluminum storefront materials, glass and glazing just took a long time to get. These were ordered back in March, but we were just actually able to receive them. So, and then eventually, we always do punchless walks with our architects and with the schools themselves to just walk through, you know, any painting scuffs, floorings that needs to be fixed. We walk through those and then eventually give those to our contractors to come back and take care of. So, very successful projects. Things turned out very well, and all in all, it went good. So, moving on to Francis Howell North, which is the real reason I'm here tonight. First of all, just talk a little bit about construction. So, construction's going very well at Francis Howell North. If you were to drive by there, the site looks quite different. Site grading is basically completed. Site utilities are basically completed. They have now started on all the concrete work, so there's a major concrete wall that separates the lower slab and the upper slab. That is under construction. You can't see any of it from the upper lot, but there's quite a bit of work going on down there. We're also starting to pour some of the footing pads and some of the grade beams in the lower level, so there's a lot of work going on there. And then the underground mechanical and plumbing rough is getting ready to start. So, all the work's going on underground right now. You don't see a lot coming out of the ground yet, but you will in the near future. So, some of our long lead items we're working on is our storm shelter, which is built out of all concrete walls and concrete T-slabs. That is, they are being fabricated as we speak. Those are scheduled to arrive in January on the site. Those are some in excess of 100 feet long T-slabs that have to be delivered to the site and then erected, so it'll be quite exciting to see that start. Steel is also well underway. We have procured our mill order, as I talked about a couple of months ago with you guys. We anticipate start seeing steel out there right after the concrete arrives in January or February. So, things continue to move. The weather has affected us a little bit, but not much. We're moving right along, so no news is good news. Talk a little bit today about what's going to happen over the next month. So, we did receive the 99% drawings from the architects about a month ago. Those were then sent out to bidders. We received those bids today, so these are the rest of the packages that we have not yet awarded. Mainly, you think about masonry, electrical, mechanical, flooring, painting, those kind of things. We had about 60 packages that came in today. So, it took about two and a half hours to read them all and open them all in a public setting on Zoom, but I'm glad we're done with it and it's over. We are now handed those bids to SM Wilson, our construction manager. They will begin the process of starting to evaluate those bids, scoping them out, making sure they have everything included, and then be bringing those back to us as a budget/guaranteed maximum price. So, that's what will be happening over the next month. The hope is that SM Wilson will come to the November board meeting to make a presentation on the guaranteed maximum price, give you an update of where the costs are, give you an update of how things are going. They'll be doing that presentation, so it's something to look forward to. I wanted to take a little bit of a time tonight to just kind of prepare the board for probably what is coming up. So, this has been in the board report that I've been issuing, but just to speak a little about it tonight, you know, construction continues to see, it's a very volatile market. You know, what is happening in construction in a very simple way is demand is skyrocketing. A lot of people have money, a lot of projects run hold through COVID, so everyone wants projects built, and at the same time, supply is actually being limited, not only of getting materials, getting raw materials, but also labor force. So, major shortages in labor and people to actually build the buildings. That gap has unfortunately created quite a bit of cost increase in what things are coming in at. So, I would, we are preparing for the best, we are hoping for the best, but preparing for the worst when it comes to this project. But I would not be doing my job if I didn't prepare the board for some things coming in over budget. So, we don't know what all those are yet. The bids were just received today. There'll be a lot of conversations in the future on that, I'm sure, but I did just wanted to kind of make a couple of comments about that. These are factors that are honestly completely out of our control. It is just a seller's market right now. It is not a buyer's market when it comes to construction. I do want to also tell the board that we are trying to prepare for those price increases. We have been meeting with SM Wilson and working on what we call value engineering items. So, these are things that we look at in the project that maybe we could do cheaper, maybe we can do better. That work is beginning to take place. It's already taken place in the past, but it's getting more and more as pricing comes in. Once we get subcontractors on board, we can begin to pick their brains. Is there a better way to do it? Is there something that we're trying to procure that might take too long to get or might be there's a cheaper way? That's beginning to happen. And then along with Facilities Committee, which has been meeting and starting to really try to prioritize projects. So, obviously, if one project has a cost overrun, it has an impact down the line. So, the Facilities Committee has been meeting monthly. We had a great meeting yesterday, last night, to try to really start talking about what would it look like going forward if some of these projects do begin to come in over budget or where we expect them to? How would we begin to prioritize what gets done, what gets done first, and how we move forward? So, you know, the goal is to stretch every dollar as far as we can, and there is a lot of good work happening on that. So, I want the board to feel confident that, you know, that is happening, but we will have some challenges in front of us and we'll just have to deal with them as we go. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys if you have any questions at all for me.
I guess one question. You alluded to the fact that prices are increasing, demand is, you know, demand is high, supplies are low.
Yeah.
We've had some packages that we've already bid out that have come over budget or, you know, higher than we anticipated.
Yes.
I know that, and we all look forward to next month's bid opening as, you know, our bid proposal is coming forward, but do we have any idea? I mean, are we talking 60%, 70%? We talking 20%, 10%? Do you have a guess? I know it's just a guess based on the publications and what you're hearing in the industry.
Mr. Hain, one of the things that Jeremy and I have talked about is that now that the bid packages are in, we will be working with SM Wilson to go through those and, as he said, to value engineer or to otherwise find ways that we can reduce the overall cost of that building project. One thing that we want to be careful of, I think, as we go through this process and over the next couple of weeks, is not to, in a sense, tip our hand as to what we're expecting in terms of an inflationary cost. So, I'm hesitant to say a number because as we go back to the subs, asking them to take a harder look at the prices that they've provided to us, I don't want there to be a public record that we anticipate that the inflation is going to be X percent because they might be able to trim their costs a little bit lower than that. So, it's strategic on our part not to be publicly talking about what our expectations are, but privately, design team, Mr. Bettler, Dr. Hoven, we're watching those contracts very closely to see how we can provide the greatest value at the lowest possible cost in a very, very difficult market. So, the other thing that I would share with the board, just to set expectations at the right level, if we need to spend a greater amount of time working on the guaranteed maximum price, much as we did with the steel package where we gave the contractor additional time to try to solicit additional bids, it is a possibility that we won't be ready with the guaranteed maximum price for the November meeting. But shortly after that, and it may be the, it may be similar to what we've done previously is to ask the board to meet in a special meeting, just to give the contractor, SM Wilson, a little bit additional time to continue to work with the subs to help bring the price of the project down. So, our goal is to get done and to bring the GMP to the November meeting. But I think we were surprised by the number of packages and the number of contractors who submitted packages, so there's a tremendous amount of work to do as we work towards that GMP, and the best interest of the district will be served to do the job correctly than to do it just quickly. So, again, our goal is to have it done for November, but if we need additional time, we'll let, we'll give the board as much advance notice as we can to let you know what we're expecting in that regard and why, and move as quickly as we can to get to GMP. But again, we want to make sure with a large project like this that we do things correctly and drive the best value for the school district.
No, that pretty much sums it up. I knew that there were multiple packages, you know, and I think on the presentation here, it said there were over 60 bid packages received, and any one of those could have had 15 or 20 bidders on those packages. So, they are being competitively bid. They're giving us their best price, and I know that SM Wilson has been working to make sure that we receive efficiencies all along the route, so very comfortable with that process.
Anything else, board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda items for October 21st, 2021, as presented.
I'd like to amend the motion or propose an amended motion. I'd like to pull item H from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? So, right now, we have a motion on the table to pull item H, LMH review out of consent agenda for discussion. Mr. Ziegemeyer, second in? Board, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda. Yeah, H is the LMC review. Okay, I'm good. Board, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of H.
What is H?
H is the LMC review.
Learning Commons Review.
We'll talk about it in a sec.
Those are, that's not the consented, LMH review.
Yeah, she already pulled it, so it's, that's in real time, so it's already moved.
We'll discuss that later.
It was H. We'll pull, we'll be discussing here in a minute. Okay, board, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of H.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board, I would like a motion to approve items pulled from consent.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. The only reason I pulled this is the Learning Commons Annual Review. There was something at the back of the program that related to some additional book titles, and I don't know if there's some, if somebody in administration can answer a couple of questions. I had two questions. One was, what is considered a diverse title? Does anybody want to?
I can help you out with that.
Okay.
Think of it like variety. So, if you swapped the word diverse title for variety, their Fallet is the program we use to manage the collections in our school libraries, and they have a new report that they call the Diversity Report, and it's to tell us about the diversity of our collection. So, think of it like the variety of books in our collection, and they have different topics. So, there's 39 different topics that show up in their report that tells us about the diversity of our collection. And so, those topics range from things such as, I jotted a few down, Caribbean regions is a topic, holidays and traditions is a topic, learning disabilities, mythology, physical disabilities, LGBTQIA, rural, poverty, homelessness. Those are examples of the 39 different topics that are represented within the Diversity Report.
And then, I guess, as a follow-up to that, why is it important to diversify this collection? And when we say in here we want kids to be able to see themselves in these books, what exactly does that mean?
When we say that, what we're talking about is we want kids to be able to pick up a book that has characters or cultures or situations that align with their life. So, if I'm a student and I'm growing up in a single-parent household, we want them to be able to have access to texts that feature families that are also a single-parent household. If we have students who celebrate Hanukkah, we want to be sure that our holiday section of our elementary library includes books that aren't just about Christmas, but are about a variety of topics. If we have students who identify as a member of the LGBTQIA community, we want them to be able to access texts that have similar characters. Kids who experience homelessness growing up, we want them to have books in their libraries that they can read or books that other students can read so that they can empathize with the situations of their peers.
Can we refrain from commenting, please? Thank you.
And then the other, I guess the other part in it, it's my understanding that this is, these books are coming out of the original budget. There's no additional appropriation. These are just part of the purchase of the books.
Yeah, each building gets a budget each year, and this is just part of what they'll do when they add to their collections.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion, board? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Board, I would like a motion to approve the continuation of the current mask guidelines and mitigation protocols as presented, to be reviewed again at the November business meeting and to allow the superintendent to make changes to protocols as the situation dictates.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Ruppus.
Good evening, board members. So, I'd like to start this evening by reminding you of the St. Charles County health rules under which we currently have to operate. One of the misconceptions out there is that we do participate in contact tracing and we do send students home. We do that under our communicable disease policy. It is St. Charles County who ultimately places individuals under quarantine, under statutory authority by the state of Missouri, and until they're directed otherwise and they change that, we will continue to follow those guidelines. Within that, we do contact trace internally, and we provide that information to St. Charles County. As we've shared with you previously, in situations where both parties are masked and there was close contact at school, they are eligible to continue to attend school or attend work as long as they remain symptom-free. In situations where somebody has previously tested positive for COVID for 90 days, they are not required to quarantine, and as we've shared before, if you are fully vaccinated, you are also not required to quarantine. These next few slides share with you some of the current St. Charles County data. This first slide is the 14-day rolling average, which is the number of new cases per day. Currently, and this data was pulled yesterday, so as of yesterday, we were at 74 cases on the 14-day rolling average. That's come down just a little bit. You see that peak that happened right at the start of the school year during August was right about 105. We're still higher, though, than where we ended last school year, which was approximately 20 new cases per day in St. Charles County. This slide focuses specifically on the ZIP codes within the Francis Howell School District, shows the 14-day rolling average, and this is a positivity percentage rate of tests that were given. Within the Francis Howell School District, as of yesterday, this was 8.55%, a little bit higher than the overall county rate of 8%. It went up just a little bit today, but we actually were at our lowest two weeks ago when we hit 7.76%. Why is that important? One of the thresholds that comes from the CDC and from the Department of Health and Senior Services in the state of Missouri is that when we reach a level of 5% or lower, that's considered low community spread, and when the community spread will be low, that indicates that there will be less spread likely within the school district. less spread likely within the school district. This slide also focuses on the Francis Howell School District ZIP codes specifically. And this is the prevalence of positive cases. So it's the number of confirmed positive cases per 1,000 residents. And as of yesterday, that was at 2.36. You'll see since really the start of the year, we had kind of reached a plateau and it is slowly coming down. And this last slide shows a heat map that as of yesterday indicated just the level of new cases per 100,000 residents. Much of the district you'll see is in that medium blue shade, a little bit darker. I think it's a shade darker than where we were last month at this time, but still much better than where we were at a little bit earlier this summer. These next few slides speak specifically to the Francis Howell School District data. This was polled as of 8:00 AM yesterday morning. So we have had approximately 14 additional cases since then, but wanted an opportunity to at least cut off the data to be consistent with what we share with you. So yesterday morning, as of 8:00 AM, we had 49 active positive cases in the district. 32 of those were student cases and 17 of them were students. We had 174 students yesterday who were home on standard quarantine. And I'll remind you, that's when the, a student was considered a close contact of a positive individual and they, either the positive case or the close contact were not masked. And so the student is home on a 10-day standard quarantine. And we had 24 students were home on the modified quarantine. And as I just shared, that meant that both the positive individual and the close contact were both masked. And so the students can continue to come to school for the academic school day, but following the county guidelines, they are not able to participate in athletics or activities during that quarantine. This slide shows our overall cumulative cases since the start of the school year. So as of yesterday at 8:00 AM, we were at 440 total cases. 373 of those have been student cases and 67 were staff. We've had a total of 1,567 students who have been out on standard quarantine from close contact at school. To give you a little context, last year, we did not reach 440 positive cases in the district until right around December 1st. It was when we came back from Thanksgiving. There's not a clear comparison year over year because the reality was last year when we opened school, pretty much everyone was still on a lockdown. And so there was limited exposure anywhere. And we had a slow ramp up. And it was this time of year when cases really began to increase in the district. Where right now, we feel like our data is trending positive and those cases are beginning to come down. I will also share that last year at this time, we were at about 6,000 standard student quarantines. And so right now, we're at about a quarter of that. You see the breakdown? We have a lot of questions around our masked grade levels pre-K through six and our unmasked... Oops, sorry, I jumped ahead of the slide. I'm sorry. 59 of the students that have been identified as close contacts have later tested positive. So that currently would be a spread rate internally of 3.77 percent. And just to be clear, that's determined by the number of positive cases out of the number of standard quarantines in the district. 298 students total have been on modified quarantine since we started the school year. And then as of yesterday morning, just over 1,400 individuals have remained at school or work because they have been fully vaccinated. And that's actually just over 1,200 individual students. So this slide breaks down our cumulative cases looking at our pre-K through six students who are wearing masks and our seventh through 12th grade students. So of those 373 student cases, you see that 183 of those have been in grade seventh or higher. 190 were pre-K through six. The breakdown there of our student quarantines, 975 have been grades seven through 12 and 592 kindergarten, or preschool through sixth grade. And then I show there that 3.77 percent of school spread. 39 of those cases have been in grades seven through 12, which is 4 percent. And 20 of those cases have been pre-K through six at 3.38 percent. And then the last data point there is the 298 student modified quarantines. You see that 59 of those have been in grades seven through 12 with 239 pre-K through six. You know, that differential because many of our high school students don't qualify or seventh and eighth grade students for the modified quarantine because one or the other party were not masked. As of yesterday morning, this shows its percentage of active cases by building enrollment. So you see that Sager yesterday with their nine cases had the highest percentage, current positivity rate of 1.25, and it went down, goes down from there. And you do see that, you know, as of yesterday, I think we had about 12 of our buildings and schools that did not have any active cases yesterday. This is fluid, continues to change daily. Looks a little bit better than where we were at just last month when we shared this data with you. So we are recommending tonight continuing with the current mask guidelines and our other mitigation strategies as presented. I did put in there one bullet that is a recommendation we're changing around the actual strategies. And, you know, last month, excuse me, last week, we had a board meeting and I actually had an opportunity to talk with some of the patrons after that meeting who shared a lot of their concerns and thoughts about our mitigation strategies. But one of the things that we kept hearing is that parents miss not being able to be in the buildings and volunteer and be a part of what's happening in our schools. Talked with our principals this week and do feel that we're at a point to begin allowing more parent volunteers back into the buildings, supporting some of the academic needs within the buildings, as well as supporting specific events that are taking place in our schools. We're not going as far as saying we're open to full visitors to eat lunch in the cafeteria with students again, because I know we have a lot of patrons and parents that love to do that with their kids. You know, we have class parties with lots of parents. We're stepping into this. So the recommendation right now is that principals may approve volunteers for certain events and certain opportunities. And I'm hopeful that, you know, by next month, we can talk about having even more parents in. Maybe by that point, we can talk about parents being in classrooms to support the parties as we move into winter. But that was a patron concern that we heard and we felt like as we talk about the data being better in the district, that this was a logical next step to begin having our parents back in the buildings as volunteers. You know, we have two major concerns, one being the health and safety of our students and the second one is keeping them in school. And there is a lot of strong feelings around quarantine and who requires it and who doesn't. And right now, we feel that we are legally bound to continue quarantine, which means that students do have to go home. And the reality is if we made the shift right now to unmask our kindergarten through sixth grade who are eligible for modified quarantine, there would be a significant increase in the number of students who would be home on a standard quarantine. So we will continue to watch that data. We're all hopeful that we can soon make a different recommendation. One, we're getting closer to the vaccine being available for younger students, for families who choose that's the best decision for their family. We also see the community spread and the numbers within our district continuing to come down. And as those numbers come down, the combination of the vaccine being available for those who would like it, as well as the improvement in the data, both in our district and in our community, would indicate that, you know, there'd be a time when we would be able to make a recommendation to remove the masks. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have right now.
Any questions, comments, Board?
Yeah, I have a question. You talked about the cumulative cases, 373 students. I believe that was the, was 11th slide there. 373 student cases, 183 through grades seven through 12, 190 pre-K through six. So they almost look identical between the two of them. And I guess that those actual cases that they were positive with COVID is largely due to con, or transmission or developing, or I should say, actually getting the disease was outside of school. That was determined from the contact tracing? Let me state that as a different way. So when I, when I pull up the dashboard, the cumulative cases basically look as if the vast majority of them are not school-connected.
That is correct. So you see there that we've had 50... We've had 59 student cases internally and then the other 314 would have been from exposure, possibly outside of school. So part of our contact tracing process is we do an interview with the students and with the parents to gather information. When we can determine that it was a close contact in school, which generally means you had previously been identified as a close contact of a positive individual, and then where did that happen? Was that during, in the classroom instruction period, during lunch, on the bus, before and after school? In many cases, families can tell us it was from mom, it was from dad, it was from an uncle at a wedding, it was from an out-of-school sports team. We also have a number of cases. So pre-K through six, we have 107 of those total, 373 cases that we would say are unknown. They weren't identified as a direct link to a close contact at school. But the parents also can't identify any outside contact to a COVID-positive case. And so I would assume some percentage of those were school spread, not necessarily all of them, but that it would be a little bit higher potentially.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just for clarification, it's the Health Department that has the statutory authority for quarantines, correct?
That is correct.
And we're just following their statutory authority?
That is correct.
Okay. And so as, as a result of that, I appreciate that. And I do, what I'm about to say probably is going to get mixed emotions from even individual groups. What I will say is that I think that everybody on this panel up here and within the school administration has handled this pandemic wonderfully. I think that it is a troublesome event that came and you guys had to deal with it and never have dealt with it before. It hasn't happened in 100 years. So, and not knowing how to actually work through it, you guys have done it and done it well. So I disagree with the, or the perception that that wasn't done well. What I kind of spoke against last week with the special meeting is that as this has gone on and we're entering into probably a little bit more than 18 months, my willingness to support a mask mandate is starting to evaporate, indicated that last week. And I want to be clear that I state that out of no kind of public pressure. That was something that has been ongoing and I stated it last week. And so as a result of that, I think that there's one personal responsibility of the individual families. I think that there's a responsibility of the Health Department that they, if they think that it's masks should be mandated, they have the authority to mandate that. And so as it has been more than 18 months, I think that us trying to play catch up with the Health Department, it's more of their authority at this point. And so just wanted to kind of explain that because I will probably, not probably, I will be voting against the recommendation. And I'm not...
Can we please? Thank you.
And I'm just, I mean, I'm just stating that as one individual board member. That's just my support because the numbers have evaporated because of the numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Ziegemeyer, I fully support that. And I, I just want you to know as well as the patrons who would also like our students to be mask-free, that when that time happens, if the St. Charles County has not changed the quarantine guidelines, we unfortunately will be sending a lot more students home. And I know, I know the same parents that don't want their students to be in masks also don't want their students being sent home because they were close contact at school.
Would, what was the, is there a new exception to the modified quarantines?
The exceptions, so again, St. Charles County has said that they've offered us exceptions around quarantine. One of those quarantines is a, if one party was masked, that the other person could continue to come to school. There's also now DESI and Department of Health and Senior Services has introduced a test to stay option. However, it's important to understand that both of those options require students to continue to be masked when they come to school. So the same families generally that don't want the students to wear masks also don't support the ongoing testing or the other mitigation strategies of having to wear a mask when you come back. And so, yes, those options are out there and we're exploring them, but they still have a mask mandate attached to them for the close contact to continue to attend school.
Okay, and so we're, we're still exploring those potential options. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we please stop with the comments? Thank you. We have to be quiet, please. Thank you.
I also think it's important to remind the audience that this is a business meeting. We did have public comments earlier. That time has closed, so please allow us to conduct our business meeting.
There's no more warnings. Thank you.
Everybody, please stop. I know this is a very emotionally charged thing for everybody, but they're trying to discuss it and both sides. It's not, you're not going to resolve the issue. They're trying to resolve the issue.
But they look for us.
We're, we're done with the outpers, please. So they'll, if it doesn't stop, they're probably going to go to closed session and you won't be able to argue with them. So please stop, or I'm going to have to remove people. I don't want that to happen. Please stop.
Any other discussion, comments, Board? Mr. Hayne?
Yeah. I just want to say that Dr. Rumpus, Dr. Hovin, all our administrators in going through this process have gone above and beyond. And I have full confidence in the data that they're presenting to us. And all the information we're getting is accurate as can be. That being said, I don't believe that masking was ever intended to be a permanent option. I think that, you know, that it has to end at some point in time. I do believe that our numbers aren't showing a massive amount of spread within the district. I show our numbers are improving. So that being said, I think we need to be moving toward or looking forward to a mask optional policy sooner rather than later. Right now, there's two districts that are somewhat similar in size to us that are, that have mask optional policies. And they don't seem to be imploding. Now, there is some question about the reliability of the data that they're, that they're presenting and the reliability of things. When you have the exact same number of cases and the amount of quarantines is one-tenth of a percent, or you know, or one-tenth of the amount of quarantines, there's faulty data somewhere. I'm not pointing any fingers at any other districts. I'm saying I have full confidence in our numbers and that. So with that being said, you know, it seems like that there are some districts that are working through that. I can support, you know, this recommendation for an additional 30 days with the hope that in 30 days, with the continuance of low numbers and with everything moving in a positive directions, that we may go to a more ask of mask optional policy. Is that something that we're, we're trying to work towards or is that something that's even on the radar?
The, the way I would answer that is that I think, I speak for myself, I won't speak for everyone else. I want us to get at some point to mask optional. I think, as has been stated by many people, none of us entered this pandemic with a desire to wear masks. I haven't met a single person who enjoys wearing a mask. And so I, I personally would state the goal of getting to mask optional when we feel it is safe and appropriate. And so if, if the question is, are we working in that direction? I think we absolutely are. I think as we've presented tonight, we see positive trends in the data that would tell us we hope we are getting there. I can also say back in June, we thought we were getting there as well. And so we will continue to be responsive to the situation regionally in our county, but also and most especially inside our buildings. And so I, I desire to get to that point as well, but I want it to be safe and appropriate when we do so.
Okay. And then as a follow-up to that, I believe that a consistent approach is the best approach. I believe being leaders are being leaders. I don't believe that having mask optional one month, masking them two days later, going back, back and forth, I don't believe is good for the community. I don't believe it's good for the schools and especially not good for the kids. So I think a consistent approach that is based on data that we can rely on is the best way to go. It's my intent, I think, as everyone else's intent, to get back to normal as soon as possible, as soon as it's safe. And we can all agree on what those parameters are. But consistency, I think, has some merit because some districts in our county have gone back and forth on a whim and it's, it's not good for anybody in the community. It's not good for anybody in the schools. So that's basically all I have to say on that.
Any other comments, questions, Board? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Board, I would like a motion to approve the monthly stipend for substitutes for the 2021-2022 school year as presented. Ms. Simpkins.
Thank you. As we have shared with the Board in our best practice last month, it is becoming more and more difficult to deal with the shortage of substitute teachers. And with, within the resources that we have available, we are looking for a new strategy to encourage our substitutes that are interested in being substitute teachers to devote their time and efforts in Francis Howell. So we are proposing a $200 monthly stipend for any of our substitutes who work at least 10 days in a current month. They would be eligible for the stipend each month if they worked 10 days, either as a substitute teacher or a substitute paraprofessional. So if we think of that stipend, $200 and a substitute had worked 10 days, that would increase their daily pay by $20 per day, as well as they have the option of working during their planned time, the teacher's planned time in another capacity within the building. So I want to remind our substitutes that So want to remind our substitutes that that is still an option, that they could earn an additional $15. This would be on top of our progressive pay incentive that is already in place. And we're just hopeful that this will encourage our substitutes to focus their time, effort, and energy in Francis Howell. Of the 500 substitutes that we have in our system, about 61 of them worked 10 or more days in the month of September, and there were 20 student-contact days. So we're hopeful that this will encourage our substitutes and also reward them for the time and effort that they're putting into our schools.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah. I have a quick question. It's something, I apologize for not presenting this earlier, but it's something I just thought of in looking at this. I know that we also have a number of custodian positions that are open, and we have substitute custodians that fill those positions. Is this something that we may be able to apply to those also to increase participation?
I'd be happy to look into that, Mr. Hain. We have a very small number of people on our substitute custodial list, but we could absolutely look at the research behind that and look at the data, see how many substitutes are there, how many days they're working, and see if that would be an option. I'd be happy to research that.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I apologize again for not submitting that question earlier.
Ms. Simpkins, would you please also look at that for our para-professionals to see if we have some of our paras that we could also do the same thing for?
This incentive would apply to those people that are subbing as a para-professional or a substitute teacher. That pool of people really tend to fall into both categories.
Okay.
So this incentive, if they are working as a substitute para or a substitute teacher, would make them eligible for the $200.
So our substitute teachers, they also have the, the opportunity, if they wanted, to go in as a substitute para?
Yes.
And then they will also have the chance to get that stipend?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
The difference, Janet, is that some folks are in the system only as a substitute para, and they may not have the substitute teaching certificate because it required the 60 college hours. As of November, those folks will be able to participate in DESI's new rule, which is taking the 20 hours of online training to get that substitute certificate. So now it could be a more fluid group, but in the past, we had some folks that were only eligible to be a substitute para, but always our substitute teachers could accept those para roles, and, and we do see that sometimes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Will this apply to our full-time substitutes?
No, sir. They are, our permanent substitutes have a, a different rate of pay, they receive benefits, retirement, they are a permanent employee, they are not substitute teachers, they're more of a support staff role, like a full-time para-professional would be. So this would not apply to those permanent subs. They are guaranteed to work every day and are paid a higher wage because of that.
Making sure, and second, and this is way out in left field, is there some way to be, offer even very small stipend to teachers that are continually teaching a class and a half? You know, our teachers are overwhelmed and their teacher A does not show up, and these two teachers take half of my class, but giving them something, I think, it typical, just this year, typically it happens once in a blue moon, but this year it's happened often. And, and I don't care, and I'm not, I'm sorry I don't want it to sound like that, but some kind of something, instead of thanking the teacher for going out of their way, maybe it was four times this month, because we all know that we're having problems with subs.
We have heard that recommendation, and we're, we're researching that.
Great.
We have, I think what you're referring to is funneling.
Yes.
When a class goes to multiple cases. And we have had funneling in our practice for our special area teachers for a number of years and have not offered a, a compensation for that before. So I think it's something that we just have to work through and, and determine if we, if we have the resources available to do that.
Any other comments, board?
I just have to say I'm, I am hopeful this, this does something. I know everyone's stressed through the teachers, or the paras, the admin, everyone is stressed. So I am hopeful this, this does, does a little, little something to get, get everyone the support they're needing. So, okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Board, I would like a motion to approve the financial statements for September 2021 as presented.
So move. Second.
Mr. Supple?
We're concluding, we've, the statements cover the first quarter of the fiscal year. Things are progressing as we would expect them to. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Board, any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Board, I would like a motion to approve the purchases over 7,500 as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Board, I would like a motion to approve the revised 2021-2022 school year calendar as presented. Second? Ms. Simpkins?
Thank you. I just want to thank Dr. Buckman for all the work that she put into gathering our snow day committee and, and gathering input from many stakeholders to make this recommendation to you today. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allows districts to utilize up to 36 hours of alternative methods of instruction, or an AMI plan, in the event of emergency closures. And this really prompted us to gather that snow day committee of stakeholders to discuss how we would handle snow days this school year. The committee conducted a survey to gather input from parents and staff members and received approximately 5,000 responses. The feedback from the committee and the survey were reviewed by full cabinet, and tonight we're recommending that we revise the 21-22 school year based on all of the input from the survey, the committee, and, and the full cabinet discussion. What we are suggesting is that snow days one, two, and three would be traditional snow days and would be added to the end of the school year. And that's consistent with the past practice and what we're familiar with as a district. Snow days four, five, and six, and seven, should we get to that many, and we really focused on six snow days as we tried to make this recommendation because that is what we've seen the last two, two school years. It's been some time that we've seen more than six snow days. But, snow days four, five, six, and seven would be traditional snow days for students, but would be forgiven for students. They would not make those days up at the end of the year, which would bring us closer to the 1,044 hours that DESI requires students to have instruction. If we were to see snow days eight, nine, and 10, and it's been a, a long time since the district has, has seen that many snow days, we would be close to the 1,044 hours that is required by DESI. And so if we did hit snow days eight, nine, and 10, those would be made up at the end of the school year. I wanted to point out that our high school seniors follow a modified calendar already, and they already, in their calendar, attend school for the minimum hours required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Currently, without any snow days, their last scheduled school day this year is May 20th. And so any snow days that we would experience would extend their school calendar. They would have to make up any snow days from one through 10, so that we are making sure that they have those 1,044 hours completed. What we intend to do is just review the effects of this plan before we bring to you a revised 2022-2023 calendar that has already been approved by the board. But we want to just kind of live this for a year before we commit to a, a future calendar following the same plan. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board, any questions, comments?
So I just want to make sure I understand, snow days one, two, and three will be added to the end of the calendar, and then snow days four, five, and six will be forgiven.
And seven.
And seven. And then if we have any more, eight, nine, or 10, then those would also have to be made up?
Correct.
So there wouldn't be any, we wouldn't talk about alternative methods, we wouldn't talk about anything like that, would just, would be, they'd have to be made up, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We had a lot of conversation about alternative methods of instruction. It was definitely an option that we discussed at length with the committee. And when we looked at the survey responses, that wasn't the number-one choice of our families or our staff. Just had some different struggles to make that happen in the best interest of students. And so this was a combination of the first choice, second choice of our committee, first choice, second choice of our parents, and what we feel like is, is reasonable and doable when we get into the weeds of making the plan work.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood it. Thank you.
Anything else, board? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have our policy and regulation presented for a first reading. Been brought back in November for a second reading, review, and approval. Any questions or comments on those, board? All right. Board, I'd like a motion to approve the suspension of Policy Regulation 4610 CR for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Ms. Simpkins?
Thank you. We are asking the board to suspend this policy for a second year as it dictates the number of observations that are required in the teacher evaluation. We were very hopeful that we would return to normal at the start of the school year, and we quickly realized it is not a normal school year. Our administrators are continuing to spend a significant amount of time contact tracing. In addition to all of the things COVID-related, we find ourselves feeling the effects of a national labor shortage. Many of our administrators are, are coordinating open positions, coordinating people to fill those positions. We find our teachers and our staff members being pulled out of their regular work to support and assist our students on an emergency basis. And because of all of that stress, we kind of find ourselves in survival mode, as you've heard today, reacting to the day-to-day stress. And we feel that pausing this policy again this year will relieve some pressures and some stress for all of those people involved in this process. This year, along with last year, will give us some information, and we have already started to work with Anita Keener, the president of FHA, to begin plans to bring together a committee that will review the, the number of observations going forward that are really necessary in this plan, so that instead of asking you to continue to suspend this policy in, in the years coming, that we can really take some time to look at what is the number of observations that are really required that would be a good, a good process moving forward for our administrators and our teachers. But at this point, it really is just trying to relieve some stress and some pressure from our teachers, for our staff, as we, as we just kind of deal with the day-to-day emergencies that we see.
Any questions or comments, board? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Board, I would like a motion to approve the suspension of Policy Regulation 4610 ES and SU for the 2021-22 school year as presented. Ms. Simpkins?
For all of the same reasons that I just mentioned to you today, we are asking to pause this policy as some of the procedures are very time-consuming for the evaluation process for our support staff and FISA members. This policy will, this change will mirror what we did last year, just removing some of the pre-planning meetings, removing some of those detailed notes in the evaluation system. Our, our evaluations will still occur, and if there are any concerns or issues, of course, our administrators will speak with our employees and document those, but in most cases, we have tremendous employees that, that work so very hard every day, and this will just allow us to kind of share some good, positive thoughts and move forward without a strong, a long process of an evaluation.
Okay. Board, any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have superintendent comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. As we have talked about some tonight, we know that there's been a lot of stress across the district this year, and we have been spending a lot of time brainstorming and trying to find ways to reduce that stress. You saw tonight some of the recent agenda items with reducing evaluations, increasing sub-stipends. Those are just a couple of recent examples. Ms. Simpkins and her department have done a ton of work to try to help filling open positions and look at creative ways to do a lot of this work. So we really have worked hard to try to find ways to reduce some of the stress across the organization. What I'm looking forward to when we return from fall break is we will engage with all of our staff, our support staff, our certified staff, and our administrators, to really solicit their help in problem-solving in, in tangible ways that we can find ways to reduce that stress. So we're looking to use a thought-exchange tool to work just with our staff internally and, and shift it into that problem-solving mode. You, you tell us exactly what kinds of things you feel will really help, and we will do our very best to be flexible enough to make some of those things happen. So we know that across the district, we do have requirements that we can't change that are put on us by, you know, state level and things like that, but if we have some internal things that we can change, we will really be as flexible as we can to help reduce that stress. So I'm looking forward to engaging with our staff after fall break on that. And with that, I just want to wish everyone a very much needed and well-deserved fall break. I hope everyone can truly step away from their work, spend time with family and loved ones, and, and do everything they can to recharge during that week away.
Okay. Board of Education, do you guys have any questions, question comments? Any? Anything? Okay. I will echo Dr. Hoven and wish everyone a happy fall break. Okay. Next up, we have all of our information. There's lots of reports under there. There's also information on board candidate filing. For anyone interested in that, that's all under Board Docs. And with that, board, I would like a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.